Can we call the meeting to an end? Can we please stand and bid pledge?
We'll be standing to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a regime just for all.
At this point, we're gonna start our public hearing on our capital improvement project and turn it over to Mrs. Conley.
Thank you, everyone. This evening, we are doing our public hearing on our capital, capital project. The vote is next Tuesday, December 13th. This is our agenda this evening. We're gonna talk about the project development and the district vision. It's important to note that we did have a capital committee that consisted of some board members, community members, Mr. Penella, the superintendent, Young Wright, our architects, myself, our director of facilities, Mr. Wile, when he was with the district, also participated on the committee. So we, this committee-
Passport members.
Yes, passport members, thank you. So that committee really came up with the scope and the financial plan for this project that you're gonna hear about this evening. We'll talk about the project's scope, the financial summary, and then offer an opportunity for questions and answers. I'll turn it over to Mr. Penella, who will talk about the mission and some of the scope on the project.
Thank you. Happy to welcome with us, to here, to present with us Jerry Young from Young and Wright. He's one of our chief architects. So you'll have the educational programming discussion, the nuts and bolts discussion, and the financial piece. And if there's any question that you have that we can't answer, then we'll turn it over to Jim. So we always keep our mission in mind at the forefront of everything that we're doing. And as we've mentioned, the project's broken down, 29.6 million broken down according to the way we have it set up on the screen here. Approximately 10 million for educational and public access. BCS scope is approximately 6 million. BCS stands for building condition survey. So that will be the piece that Jerry will cover. And then site work is approximately 4 million. So as we move forward, we'll start with the educational and public access components. Most of the work is centered on the high school. It's our oldest building, and it's the building that needs the most updating at this point. So the pictures you see throughout the presentation will show the current condition of the areas that are listed. We'll start with the kitchen and cafeteria. Both of them have tremendous potential to be very large community gathering places, nice places for things other than just serving food and eating food. And they have wonderful windows that, you know, will allow bright natural light. They also, it also has access to the courtyard, which will be a nice feature, you know, if we arrange it appropriately and allow that access during our lunches and when the weather permits. So we're proposing, you know, ceiling and tile replacement, upgrade the faculty dining, reconfigure spaces. There's been some discussion about formalizing a space down there for a bookstore instead of the ad hoc space that they operate out of now. In our art rooms, you know, currently, again, in the basement, I guess, of the high school, you know, they need upgrading. Again, we're proposing to reconfigure the spaces, interior finishes, wireless and digital upgrading, so we can offer a balance of fine arts, ceramics, photography, as well as some digital arts and some technology-based art programs. Same is, same goes for our technology classroom. Right now, what you see is resembles our typical shop, which many of you may have experienced when you went to high school, industrial arts. We're looking to invest in a 21st century space that will allow us to integrate some of the STEM-based engineering programs that are going to be very important for the workforce as we move forward and important for our students to have some experience with. So there's also some repair of concrete flooring and interior finishes there. This, we've looked to have both. We don't necessarily want to lose our woodworking program, but we also would like to add things like flexible automation, additive manufacturing, VexBots, you know, engineering principles that are critical for the jobs that don't exist, that our kids will probably be contending for. Our culinary and hospitality room needs an upgrade. We typically offer gourmet foods and foreign foods, as well as one other class that's eluding me right now, but those are the main two that we offer out of this room. And it's important to note that all of these spaces, as you look at them, will offer us the opportunity for increased community education and potential adult education classes for our community as well. You know, in the line of culinary arts, arts, fine arts, technology, those will all provide us with opportunities to enhance our community offerings or adult ed. And then our music rooms, desperately in need of an upgrade. We're looking at increased storage, increased capacity within the room, increased technology. You know, we'll have a lot of work if the bond passes in designing it, but there are some creative things you can do to increase the amount of time students are performing and the feedback teachers provide them. For example, you can put soundproof practice rooms in where kids can go in there, and even though there might be a whole orchestra or band outside playing, they can close the door and play, and the computer records what they're playing, and then the teacher accesses, can access the recording at a later time and provide the students with feedback. That's just one example of something that I've seen in my travels. They also have the ability to offer professional recording technology within the room, so when the band and orchestra and the chorus are performing, they can rehearse and review their performances to perfect them for when they go onstage or produce them for consumption by the community at large. We're also looking to brighten our new, our entryway, you know, after you've come in from the high school. As you walk up the main walk from Main Street, it's a very picturesque building, very architecturally appealing. When you open the beautiful wooden doors that were hand-finished by one of our alumni, you see that stairwell. So our goal would be to somehow brighten that entryway, make it more inviting, you know, make it less of just a stairway to climb up to the first floor there. And we are proposing some corridor renovations. We have very structurally sound and solid terrazzo flooring, so we would look to polish that and brighten it, but then we have a little bit of a hodgepodge of lockers in the building. Some are blue, some are red, some are white, some are recessed in the wall, some actually protrude from the wall. So we would like to replace the lockers, paint, general cosmetic upgrades, hide the wires that are running along the ceiling, put some LED lights in so we could be more energy efficient and brighten the hallways and the corridor.
Now the exciting stuff.
Now the exciting stuff.
Building condition survey. The state education department requires you to do a building condition survey every five years since the year 2000. Really what it's doing is it's making sure you're maintaining your buildings and looking after all the items that would normally not be worth worrying about too much. So it focuses you on, and half this project is building condition survey items. So some of the items we're talking about include handicap lifts, replacing those, they're beyond their useful life. The windows on the exterior of the building, this we will, we will work with CHIPO on. CHIPO being the State Historic Preservation Society because the building is historically significant. We will have to work with them and get their approval for the windows we put in, unlike the windows that you currently have there that were done in the 90s. The state now has some say over what your windows will look like in a project. Some of the other things we'll be looking at is some of the interior finishes, just as we talked about earlier, the terrazzo, the ceilings, the walls, improving some of those throughout the building, technology upgrades. You're looking at a PA system that still has very nice wooden speakers, but you begin to feel how old they are when they're not done out of oak. It's been a while since we've put in oak speakers in a building. The telephones will be upgraded and the public address system will be upgraded. Boilers and unit ventilators will be replaced as part of the project. Radiators that we're showing there, these are all parts of the project at the high school that will be improved as part of the building condition survey. There's some plumbing pipes that will be, were reviewed as part of the building condition survey that will be upgraded. And the stairwell doors. The stairwell doors contain wire glass, which the state education department no longer considers proper. The doors are also not fire-rated, and the whole point of this is to fire and close the stairway so that somebody could exit. So that whole framing will be replaced with new glass and new framing and new fire doors. So those are some of the building addition items. If we look at the middle school, we're gonna be doing window replacement and some masonry work and HVAC improvements. At the elementary schools, we're gonna be finishing up the last pieces of those, had to do with water distribution systems. We had removed the asbestos as part of the last project. This is to replace the pipes because we didn't know that the pipes were in bad condition until the asbestos was removed off of them. And so some of those pipes will be replaced. And then we're doing tennis courts and resurfacing at both elementary schools. And there is some other site work.
So the site work refers to everything outside. So this picture is an aerial view of the back of the high school, and it goes across Westmoreland to King's Highway. So we are proposing new tennis courts at the high school. Currently, we have six there. About four of them are usable. So we're proposing to go from six tennis courts in total, four usable, to five total usable courts. Five is typically the ideal number for high school competition because when you have, when you host a match, typically there's three singles and two doubles that occur or vice versa during the match. So that five is the ideal number. We also recognize that our green space is often the green space for the community and for the neighborhood, and our tennis courts at all of our buildings are used greatly by the community, and we want to be able to offer them nice ones in order to be able to, for recreational use. So the tennis courts will be moved off the property line with our, from our neighbors there on Berryman, and the structure would be shored up, and then they would have new fencing and be resurfaced. Right where the Berryman parking lot is, we're also proposing to get rid of the access road here. If you've been back there and parked in the Berryman lot and attended something in the stadium, you'll know that there's an access road there that currently has a gate that is closed and covers the access road. So we would remove the gate and remove the access road and put a stairway there to make it easier for our residents to park on Berryman and get up to the stadium. That would also help alleviate some of the traffic on Westmoreland and in the parking lot here during main sporting events like football games when there's high attendance. We could start to use this parking lot as parking space. Of course, that would be ADA accessible, and it would prevent folks from having to climb up this grass hill and cut through the tennis courts to get out into the back part of our campus there. We would relocate our throwing station just to make sure that it's not in the way of the tennis courts and the pathway. And then the main, the next major item here is just to put some removable netting around the sides of the turf field so that when the track is in use, the field can also be in use. Currently, we have netting that runs along the backside of the field, but unfortunately, track can't be used simultaneously with the field. So that would be temporary netting that can be added and removed as needed. And then another main piece would be resurfacing the track and replacing the carpet on the turf field. It's at the end of its useful life, and the state will fully aid us in, excuse me, will aid us at our ratio, our full ratio of 75% approximately for the replacement of the turf field because we're at the useful life. Prior to now, if we didn't reach the useful life, they would only aid us at 70 or 65% for the replacement of the turf. One of the things we did proactively, as you may recall, is we did some core sampling throughout the track and the turf field and the parking lots to see exactly how much it would cost to do this replacement work. And we were pleased when the results came back that it's in really good shape and the foundation is really strong. So we're really looking at resurfacing the track and replacing the carpet on turf. We don't have to, the pad underneath and the foundation and the drainage is still in very good condition because they did a nice job initially when they put it in 13-plus years ago. So moving along south there across Westmoreland, we are looking to improve our green space. On the left-hand side of the image, we would remove the unused softball diamond that's there, and we would redo and resurface the turf there. I call it turf, I'm sorry, but the sod or the green space, the grass, it's pretty rutted. It's heavily, it's been, it's pretty hazardous for our students that are out there. So what we're planning is to resurface that and put an irrigation system in that would allow us to have not only great community green space, but quality playing fields for our students, both for practice and for competition. So that's the main site work there. And then behind our middle school, so from King's Highway to Saratoga, we're proposing first and foremost to resurface and redo the parking lot. It's heavily pitted, you probably noticed as you pulled in tonight. But the core sampling that we did requires us only to do resurfacing. The foundation of it is still in good shape. The tennis courts and the fencing would be redone behind the middle school. We would clearly define the bus loop and the traffic flow to make sure that any safety concern is alleviated. And then coming down the drive from Saratoga, we're proposing some curbing in sidewalks to ensure the safety of our students and residents that are using that to access the tennis courts, the parking lots, the playing fields. If you've ever seen, you know, when we have softball or baseball games up there, you may notice that people have started to park along the Saratoga Drive there between, you know, the street and the fencing there for our residents. It's not necessarily designed for parking, and what I noticed a few times, and some of our board members noticed, as we're coming and going into that drive often, is that it's become a little bit of a safety hazard because people are parking on one side and then walking across to watch the softball or baseball games, and there's little kids going back and forth across that drive while cars are also going in and out of the campus. So our goal would be to force the parking, to go back into the, the middle school parking lot there. And then, as you can see in the rendering, we'd have some walkways and pathways that go back out to the fields to make sure that the folks are safe when they're coming to observe our contests. That's really the bulk of the site work that we have planned. And then the question of the financial overview and the potential impact on the taxpayers.
Sure.
Is that handled by Mrs. Conley?
So the committee was charged with trying to find a scope and a size project that will fit in well and minimize the tax impact on the community members. So we have three sources, resources of revenue. The first being our state building aid. Amherst is eligible for 74.7% building aid, and it's a form of school aid that we receive for capital improvement projects. So for every dollar we spend, we basically get almost 75 cents back on that dollar from New York State. The second resource is our reserve funds. We have approximately $1.3 million in repair reserve and also a capital reserve that we're dedicating to this project. Those funds are gonna be utilized upfront to delay any borrowings that are needed and then save interest costs on the project as a result of that. And then the third resource is the local share. And I say it could be up to 20.9%, and to be transparent with the community and to show the potential of that. However, we're doing everything we can to not have that impact on the community. We have, one thing we're doing is we have debt that's coming off the books in the future, so we're trying to line up the project and the borrowings to match that as best we can. The borrowing or the tax impact, I should say, could begin in '24, '25. However, the board and the committee has talked about if there's any year-end funds available or in this current project that we're doing, if there's any funds available from that, to put it forward into this project. However, you never know what the financial condition may be at the time. Board members change, so we don't want to bind any future board into that. But as of now, that is the decision and the goal of the committee and the current Board of Education. But to be completely transparent, we do need to let the community know this could be the impact. So you can see there for an assessed value home, depending on the assessed level, the annual impact, again, beginning in '24, '25, and then the daily impact of that. What we're gonna be doing in essence is in the beginning, the first five years, we're gonna be doing short-term borrowings, one-year bond anticipation notes, they're known as, and we will only borrow what we need at that portion in time. So this is almost a, you know, $30 million project. We're not gonna borrow that full amount upfront. We're gonna borrow it in chunks according to the cash flow needs of the project. And then the schedule. Of course, we have to get approval through the state education department or SED. They do have a thorough review, and their timeline right now is approximately six months. So with that taken into consideration, with the general municipal law of having to put this out to bid and acquiring the lowest responsible bidders, that takes some time as well, doing the design and the drawings of the specifics of the project. So with all of that taken into consideration, these are our targets for the different phases of the project. So the first phase will consist of the high school site work, which is primarily the turf and the track and the tennis courts as well. And that will begin the summer of '18. And then the remaining components of the project, the building condition survey, the educational programming, and the other site work at the middle school, the tennis courts at the other buildings, that will take place primarily over the summers of '19 and '20.
So the vote is in one week, December 13th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the high school's South Dunaisium. And at this point, we have time for some questions. Yes, sir?
With respect to the state's 74.9% portion, how timely are they in terms of payment? Since the premise being that their money comes first, you know, the local money comes last, right?
Right. What we do is we do borrowings on that, and then after the project is completed, or substantially completed, I should say, we do what's called a final cost report. The state then begins to aid that and send the money to the district 18 months after the filing of that.
Good question.
Yes?
I have a question. You mentioned something about polishing the terrazzo flooring. Do you have any idea how slippery that is in the nick of time? And has anyone studied this? This could be a safety issue.
Yeah, I don't know if we, I mean, we currently have it. So terrazzo, you know, as it is in the hallway here, is a very expensive floor to put in initially, but the reason schools put it in often is because it does wear well and it does stand the test of time. So we felt like as a committee, the floor is in good shape. It just needs to be updated, you know, polished so that it looks better, but structurally it's in good shape, and we didn't think it would be fiscally responsible to rip it out and put a whole new floor in when it's still in good shape and structurally sound.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying from the safety point of view.
Yeah, well, we have-
I don't think it'll be any different than the terrazzo that's out there right now. It'll just have an appearance of being cleaner.
Right.
Is our ultimate goal. It's still gonna be a wax surface that, or, you know, they're putting a surface on that.
Yeah, and we definitely have a maintenance staff that goes above and beyond. So there's, I call them Zambonis, but, you know, there's floor sweepers that, you know, when kids are coming in and the weather's, you know, poor outside, they get them swept before they're even out of homeroom and onto their next class, you know, making sure that the floors aren't too slippery.
To follow up, other physical question. Weren't these windows just done within the last year on the high school?
No, they were done in the 1990s, early 90s, at the high school.
I've received construction around the building during election day, so that's-
There was masonry repairs that were done. There was roofing that was replaced as part of the last project. So there were some extra components. That's why you saw the scaffolding out there, but the windows were not done, and they will take a while to get approved by the state education department just because of the historic nature.
They were replaced at Wyndham and Smallwood, if you're thinking of those two buildings, so.
All very good questions. Is there anything else that I could, we could answer for you?
Another, a money question. You said you have reserve money. What's gonna happen to the reserve money once you spend it?
Well, what our goal is then is to, for the next project, establish potentially another reserve and then work towards saving for that one eventually. Don't know what the scope will be, obviously. That's much further down the road.
Question. We've recently done some testing on our pipes for lead, and there have been a few that have shown some high levels of lead and had to be put out of service. Does this get it, fix it all during the capital project or is that something separate?
It's something separate. The, the state has required lead testing for all schools on a five-year period. So as long as you're under the state 15 parts per billion, then you're free and clear. For areas that aren't under 15 parts per billion, there's a process we have to follow. So the first step in the process is to flush the system in the areas where it was over the 15 parts per billion, which by the way, is half of what the EPA recommends. The EPA recommends 30 parts per billion is safe, but the state decided 15 parts per billion would be their recommended level. So we have to flush and retest, and if we retest and we're still over 15 parts per billion, then we have to remediate. And what I'm told from some of my colleagues is that remediation is often the result of just changing the faucets out. But it, it's not a, it's not a guarantee that that would be the fix for everything, but what they're finding is that unfortunately, many faucets that were installed in schools had lead in them. So when the water sits in the faucet and you turn it on to take the sample, it's been exposed to lead. So in many cases, it's just as simple as changing the faucet. We've often, we've found that some of ours are above the 15 parts per billion because they're unused, and we've actually turned them on because they might be in a storage closet somewhere to comply with the state's, turn the water source on to comply with the state's requirement to take the sample, but then we turn it back off, and the boxes that are in the storeroom go back on top of the sink, and it's not used. So in that case, we might even be taking the entire sink out. So we have the results for both our elementary schools. The good news is we've done a pretty good job, you know, putting in water sources from the main line that connects out to the town. So we don't believe any lead testing results that are above the 15 parts per billion would be the result of the water that's coming into the building. It would be more the fixtures and the faucets.
And I would just add that the, immediately those fixtures are taken offline. They're never used again once they have a negative, a failing test. Until they pass, they, they're never exposed to anybody's, no one's allowed to use them.
I think we all have some questions here. How many students are there in the district?
2,833.
That's a big size. How, how large a group of homes are paying for it? What does this mean?
We have about 10,000 residents, residential homes in the district, about 20,000 residents total.
Now, these are all great things, all the physical things that you're recommending. What is this doing about quality of education? I'm sure it will impact, increasing their IT and all those points, but generally, have we addressed anything regarding payment to teachers? This has nothing to do with that, right?
Correct. No, that is governed by a separate collective bargaining agreement. Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? No? Well, with that, when we close the public hearing. And we will move into our regular meeting. All right, uh, we will move on. There is no visitor wishing to speak and no written communication, so we will move into, uh, special committees. We had an alternative funding committee. Mrs. Goldbach, would you like to report on that?
We did have an alternative funding committee meeting. Unfortunately, um, I enjoyed it very much from Florida. But, uh, but I'm happy to report on it. Um, we did have, uh, a great show us your stripes event. We talked about that, uh, prior to this, but the committee was able to talk about, um, some changes and, and, you know, improvements that could be made going forward as we do with any event. Uh, so some of the things talked about were some more advertising and, and some more kind of PR around it, you know, letting the community know where the money's going, you know, where the grants are going, um, getting the Amherst bead, have a nice picture of a big check or something fun like that, um, pictures, uh, from teachers, um, or, or other, uh, groups that have benefited from the money that is raised through the, uh, Stripes event. Um, we also want to encourage, uh, different groups to use the Strikes tickets as fundraisers, you know. As we're selling tickets for Show Us Your Stripes, we're hearing of, you know, this group in the middle school who's selling, you know, candy bars for a dollar when they could've sold, you know, just a few tickets and raised just as much money. So, you know, we're hoping to really get ahead of that for next year and encourage different groups to use that money or use that opportunity to sell tickets to raise some money for their group. Um, and also to, uh, work more closely with the athletic teams, uh, to encourage the coaches to use tickets as their fundraiser also. Um, and then the team also went through a bunch of grant requests and, uh, approved a whole bunch of grants for different programs, including, uh, Native American Studies program and STEM kits and concert corral and, um, Windermere Musical Theater and, um, a couple others. So, it was a, a great way to use the money that was raised from the Strikes event.
We had an audit committee, uh, meeting. Both, uh, Mr. Buehl and myself are on that along with, um, Rick Tan. And, uh, the meeting, when did we met, uh, last Wednesday?
This Wednesday, yes.
This Wednesday. Um, it was just to go over our, uh, correction, corrective action plan that, from the state audit that we had, um, with some new reporting that the district's gonna be doing to us as the board, uh, which we'll see, uh, later, so. And with that, I think we had a technology meeting.
Yeah, our technology committee meetings are so cool. We got a chance to see what the kids have been doing with, uh, three-D viewers. Um, basically, it's, uh, new, newer version of the Viewmaster you used to have, um, you know, where you click the side and now you click the side and you're actually in the rainforest and you can turn around and, you know, have a three-D view, look up, look down. You actually, I mean, it's amazing, the, the, uh, technology. Um, so we got a chance to see what the kids have been experimenting with, with that. Um, the exciting part for me was, um, hearing, um, what can be done around the new space created, um, after we cleaned up with the capital project. Um, the new, the Innovation Lab, which is where we had our meeting this time, um, we've, um, decided to move it to the different buildings so we can, um, talk about what's going on in each of those buildings. But, um, the Innovation Lab in the high school, um, um, between that and the, um, technology space that's in the basement, which is more like a wood shop, um, and discussing how, um, the kids can create, um, a robot, for instance, in the, um, Innovation Lab. And then, um, they would work with the music department and their, um, ELA classes and it would really become this big wraparound project that involved all of the different disciplines in the school to create a marketing, um, piece for the robot that they had created, um, you know, with music in the background and, um, you know, yeah. I mean, the whole idea of it is just, it, it got me excited about it and I'm sure the kids would be excited about it. And they wouldn't even realize that they were learning how to implement all these different pieces. And, you know, such a great music program and such a great, you know, we well-round our students such that I think they could really benefit from putting all those pieces together. Um, so that was exciting. And then the other, um, exciting piece that sort of plays into that is, um, the things that are going on here in the middle school with, um, Mr. Schmidley, um, the library media specialist and the things he's been doing to get people excited about STEM. Um, right now, we actually had a discussion about what's going to transpire over the next several years because the, the kids who are currently the most excited and are participating the most in the library with the Ozabots, the Raspberry Pi, are, tend to be largely female. And so, we feel like he is exposing these kids to these STEM exciting ideas before it's uncooled or something, you know, whatever happens. Um, so, um, you know, we're excited to see how that will flow through. Um, and there was some discussion about, um, some early engineering classes in the high, in the junior high school that can give you high school credit and then you can start in on the engineering, um, path, um, in eighth grade. Um, really, so a lot of exciting things that are happening in our technology department that, um, you know, I just think, um, Dr. Schoenfeld and the whole team there, um, there's gonna be a whole new, um, kind of a, a grid that talks about, that lets everybody in the staff know who does what and, you know, so they know better who to go to. And, um, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of, um, a lot of line items under each of those names because all of those people are doing so many things in so many different areas and it's, I mean, we're very lucky to have the team we have. So, it's always an exciting meeting.
Why does the board have to do this for real?
You know what? Um, Donna had talked about bringing them here tonight, um, and, um, I guess, you know, the scheduling stuff just makes it difficult, but, uh, it, it is worth doing because it's amazing, you know? And the kids, there was a video, there is a video that, um, they have showing the kids doing these things. And, and the one kid will say, "Oh, I see a snake." And somebody will, "Where is it?" And you can see them, like, they're holding the thing and they're pointing. You know, they're not, they're so engrossed in being there that they think they can point and then everybody else is there with them and that they can see it, you know? So, it's kind of a funny, you know? But the, the control that the teacher has too, to walk them through and say, you know, they can actually on a computer screen put, um, a little circle. And then they can see all the little kids' little faces to see that they're all looking where they're supposed to be looking. You know, it's like a little, just like an icon almost. And then there are arrows. So, the teacher can put in an arrow and say, "Follow the arrow." And then they can go and look at the, you know, dung beetle or whatever thing, you know, whatever they're finding in the, and it, it's pretty exciting. Yeah. That's it.
Great. On to you. Okay. Well, I'm very excited to introduce two of our fine high school students. Will Grisco and Cassidy Clayvor are here to help provide you with an update on the superintendent student cabinet. So, it works just like PowerPoint, you know, clicking left click and you're out to go.
Thank you. Okay, so my name is Cassidy Clayvor and this is Will Grisco, and we are representatives from the superintendent student cabinet.
So, basically who we are? We're, we're a group of wide, like, it's a wide variety of students, anywhere from Ben Mikadoff, who, he's not on here, but, oh, he is, he's in the corner. He's a freshman class president, to Ashawn Hines, who's a senior basketball captain. So, a, a lot of people in there.
And we meet every third Thursday of the month from around seventy-four, five to eight fifteen AM. And we've had two meetings so far in the, uh, central conference room.
Uh, in our first meeting, we discussed, we discussed basically like what did, we want this, uh, this cabinet to be. So, we discussed its goals, its purpose, code of conduct, also the strengths and weaknesses of the high school. That was the basis of our first meeting. Uh, some of the strengths up there are the array of clubs, the classes, the extracurriculars. And the weaknesses were, uh, lack of unity between the grades. That's why it's great we have a wide variety. We have the students from the freshmen's all the way up to the seniors. So, we feel like it's fairly, um, there's a really good variety. Yeah, it's well-integrated throughout the whole school.
And we just had our second meeting and it was, uh, post-election. So, we talked about the, uh, school and the national climate. And, uh, we went around the table, talked about, you know, what were our thoughts about the election, not necessarily like a debate, but just how we were feeling. And, uh, although most of the responses were, you know, I feel that the school has generally adapted well and there wasn't a lot of negativity. But there were some students, uh, one of our representatives, Destiny Garcia, who is from, uh, CIA, and she talked about some members of her, uh, club that felt really nervous and scared after the election. And so, we discussed ways to help them feel more included as a family and as a whole. Uh, a lot of the teachers in the classes allowed discussion time, so that helped with the, uh, adaptation after. And just allowing people to speak rather than, you know, uh, going over back onto the lesson saying, "No, no, it's not important." But it is important. We may just be students, but the election does affect our everyday lives. And so, uh, we came to a conclusion of a summit which would allow an outlet of the students to talk about their personal experiences and just not keep it bottled in, but rather let everyone speak their own mind. So, yeah, that's just a pretty much an overview of what we've been doing and what we've accomplished so far.
How would something like that have happened before? Um, it, you know, it seems to me like it's a good thing this happened when it did for that particular instance, but do you feel like there was a way to do something like that before or you feel like this is really, um, filling a need that we weren't addressing? Just, uh, having them together, you know, having this team together in general? I mean, it seems to me like you've already covered so much in only two meetings and, and, but if that's me, I'd like to hear how you feel about it.
So, just about the summit in itself, talking about, uh-
Well, and just in general, how your group feels like you exist now, but you didn't exist before? And if this had happened a year ago, what would have happened, you know?
Uh, I think that just having this group being able, we only have had two meetings, as you said, um, and we've able to dis, been able to discuss things just, uh, about our community and just so quickly. And I think even like having it a year before would've been just as influential, just to allow the students to have a voice in the community.
How do you all interact with, there's, I think, what, eleven of you all? How do you, uh, feel like you are, and maybe this isn't, you haven't decided this yet, how can you, uh, impact the, the larger, um, community of students?
Of students? Uh, I mean, I've talked about what we've discussed in our meetings with my friends and maybe that's relayed through other people just about, uh, so like our second meeting, we talked about climate and environment after the election. We could've, like, spoken about this summit and gotten feedback from our peers around this.
Can you explain what the summit is on that?
Yeah, I will do that. Um, I wanted to make sure they had a chance to, they did a fantastic job preparing for tonight, so I wanted to make sure they had the stage. But, um, a couple of things to fill in. Um, one, if you recall, when, uh, Ms. Ward and myself and Mr. Pigeon presented the idea prior to having the students, uh, we picked the elected leaders from the building as a representative group to meet with because we felt like they had already been identified as leaders by the peers, so that was the natural place to start. So, that's why we had the class presidents and some team captains and, um, group leaders from different, uh, extracurricular and/or formal groups that we have in the building. Um, during our first meeting, you know, we were really laying the groundwork and one of the things we talked about was the idea that we will hit on some sensitive topics and we want them to feel comfortable hitting on sensitive topics. So, we did express that. We really wanted the cabinet to be a confidential, you know, group of folks, but we also value what they bring to the table. And the second meeting, you know, throughout the discussion, you know, it, we were all very happy, I think as a group, that our students are accepting and they are well-behaved and respectful. But they all did say, "Hey, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a summit or a forum where people can come together just to talk about race relations in the school and how things are going and what we can do to improve the climate within the building." It just so happened to come at a time when Mr. Pigeon and Mrs. Abels at the high school were investigating a similar type summit that has occurred in Rochester, starting about a year ago, last January, in the city of Rochester. So, the Friday after this Thursday meeting, Mrs. Abels and Mr. Jones and Mrs. Saladino traveled to Rochester to greet schools to investigate, um, how they pulled off their summit. And since then, I'm pleased to announce that we've had discussions with UB's Department of Social Work as well as the Amherst Youth Task Force through the town of Amherst about piloting a summit in Amherst Central High School that could then be replicated townwide with all three, representatives from all three, um, school districts within the town of Amherst. And that really came from our students. And a question that was posed to them quite simply, you know, what, what do you think we need in our school in the, in this time where there's some divisiveness across the country into the post-election world? You know, what is it that we need or what could we do to make sure that we continue to value acceptance and we continue, um, to celebrate our diversity? So, it's really, um, there, it's really been a fruitful group of students in terms of the discussion, um, high quality, as you can imagine, with the type of students that we have in our high school. And we're already moving quite nicely on that idea of a summit. Uh, Mr. Pigeon, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you already had a meeting with representatives from UB and the town of Amherst?
Yeah, we met yesterday after school.
And there was another meeting today with the Amherst Youth Task Force. So, I think the target is sometime in early two thousand seventeen. Yeah.
So, the genesis of this was, um, one of the students coming to us last year and wanting representation on the board. They felt that that was important. So, how is it then that the group is gonna, um, interact or work with the board then? Or, or is that not even a goal anymore?
Yeah, well, it's not necessarily a goal. That the student that you're referring to was working very closely with Ms. Ward and the general theme they were discov, they were discussing was governance and citizenship. And that actually became the focus, if you recall, of Ms. Ward's Fulbright experience. So, when she came back, she had learned through her Fulbright experience that in other countries, the idea of governance and, um, citizenship and, you know, student, um, activity and within governance was more prevalent in other countries. So, she had borrowed some of those ideas and that was really the evolution of that concept of a student being on the board to what we think is a more, I think, interactive and fruitful, um, process called the Superintendent Student Cabinet. So, if you recall, we went through, Mr. Pigeon did some legwork and went through, you know, some presentations about how students are represented on boards, um, across the region. And there was like three or four different models. Uh, and then with the retirement of Dr. Chavy and, uh, you all hiring me and coming into the position, I was under the impression that I had the latitude to kind of take that concept of how we might have students' voice heard and run with it. So, what we implemented was the Superintendent Student Cabinet, which allows more than just one student sitting at the table to talk to administration about things that are affecting their lives and that are, that are important to them. And again, we have evidence right here that it's something that we take quite seriously and that, you know, can lead to what we think is going to be a high-quality program implemented based on a discussion with our students.
How do you guys find your interaction with the superintendent?
Feel free to interopenly.
I mean, do you find, I mean, do you find the whole experience to be?
Oh, yeah, I mean, personally, I didn't, I barely knew who the last superintendent was. And within like the first week of Ms. Pennell being hired last year, it was throughout the school, saying hi to everybody in and out of the classes. So, yeah, it was definitely a lot nicer having the superintendent interact with students.
I like in the meetings, we all sit at a table. It's not like he's at the front and we're like the students, you know. We're all together and we're able to talk openly, which I think is really positive.
Thank you very much for the time you put into this presentation. And thank you for the time you dedicated to the cabinet, I appreciate it. I know that you're very busy and I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, it's nice to meet you guys.
Job well done.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, oh, you're done, under the superintendent's report is actually President Steinle providing an update on last year's exit poll survey. And the timing is quite nice because, as you know, next meeting, we're getting ready to talk about the three-year forecast for our budget. So this is a good time to review what our constituents had to say during last year's exit poll survey and provide us with a little bit of information as we get ready to put together this year's budget.
No, that's right, I'm just going to sit here and walk through it. We've been doing this obviously since 2014. So we now have a nice three-year history to kind of look at, at some of the responses. And you see as we go through, there's a little bit of a trend. Even though we've had different voting, number of voters come out, you know, to vote on our budget, we still have similar response rates and what have you. So, um, we just wanted to go through this to just show the, you know, share with the community and acknowledge, you know, the information that we have. And as Tony mentioned, that with budget time coming up, some of the responses we can just see and use when we're listening to the budget discussions going forward. So the, we had, over, over the three years, we've had a pretty consistent between 79 and 88 percent, you know, in terms of voters in favor of our budget. We can see, we've also had a pretty, at least the last two years, a pretty consistent response rate. We had a much greater response rate in the first year of our survey. And I think, just to note, I mean, I think when we, the first two, the last year with the number of voters that came out probably corresponds to our negative tax cap compared to the first two years where we were, had increases in our budget. Correct. Just kind of looking where we get our, you know, where the voters get their information from is obviously the district newsletter and the Amherst Bee, you know, are the, two of the bigger places where they see the information on our budget.
I think you can note there too, that the district newsletter, we've significantly improved the mailing timeliness in the last two years. I remember that 2014, it was, you know, late to a lot of people.
A lot of people got it after the fact or didn't get it at all.
So it shows that we've done a good job of making sure that we get it out.
That Capitol Project newsletter already went to all the houses, I mean, and I got it. So, yeah, significantly improved.
Just here is how they typically vote on the budget. I was very overwhelmingly, you know, the majority voted yes, with just a few different responses, whether they switch year to year, typically don't vote, or vote no. So, um, what do voters consider when voting? Number one thing, preparing children for careers in college. Second most, sending a message, I will support the budget regardless of the tax rate. So we have a lot of passionate residents as well.
Seventy-three percent is a great endorsement of how they're preparing for their children.
I would agree.
Their neighbor's children.
And then this was the new question in 2016, so we don't have the trend. But if a future budget has adequate money for Amherst schools to restore or increase programs, what area or program would you like to see supported? And the top three ranked were art, music, academic electives, AP, and foreign languages, or athletics. So being the top three responses. And then we, I'm sorry, did you want to add something?
I hope we have that problem. I would like to have extra money to do that, but.
And then the next three slides are, deal with the question, are voters willing to support a tax increase above the tax cap? We've asked this since we started our, our survey. So in 2016, you can see over 70 percent are either very willing, you know, being a number five or four, I would assume somewhat, you know, willing, I guess that would be. So we do have a majority, this past budget that voted with that. If you, if we go into 2015, you can still see, we still have a strong, the very willing, I would say willing, somewhat willing, probably, you know, type response rates. And then going back to the very beginning, again, the first three, you know, three, fours, and fives still dominate the chart, so.
Of course, you know, our vote in 2016, going above the tax cap didn't even bring us to zero yet, you know. So I think it's, it might be a little skewed to that, you know, well, yeah.
We also had far more, you know, we had more voters in 14 and 15, you know, voting as well.
We only had 10 voters who voted no for the budget, that's a very small number. So I, I think these are important.
No, they took the survey.
They took the survey, excuse me, right.
Right, we only had thirty-some percent.
So you really don't know what, I mean, I always question us to, not to take this as gospel because there's a lot of people who did not fill out the survey and they were never given that situation where we were asking them to go above the tax limit. Sometimes people respond differently if they're actually in that situation. But 10 people who voted no who responded, that's a very small, small. And even the 32 percent is a very small.
That's a very good point to make. I mean, I don't view this as a mandate, you know, but just as the ones who have responded, it's very consistent and it's a data point as all. And I'm not suggesting in any way, shape, or form we go above tax cap. It's just a question we put out there to see the response, you know, rate we get. And then the last slide in this is really just looking at what voters are willing to compromise if needed to balance the budget, which is probably one of our more important questions for us in developing budgets. And we do, we have put on here a three-year history and those are percentages, those numbers. And again, we, you know, the.
Nobody wants to agree with any of them.
So on the, right, you could see increased class sizes, you know, overwhelmingly it's, you know, ones and twos being more in disagreement. Reduced athletic clubs, again, overwhelmingly, you know, ones and twos in disagreement. Reduced non-mandated academic programs, again, overwhelmingly. Increased walking distance, however, gives a little bit more, you know. So. Right, so you. As Dr. Caricella says to it, these are just data points to look at as we're considering all our options with our budget. It's nice we do have a three-year trends to look at now, have some trends to see how, if flavor, you know, are changing. I mean, we had years where we were increasing budget, where we had a lot of people come out and we had a negative budget where we didn't. But we still have a similar response rate, you know, across the board. Do you have a question?
Can you define what response rate is on, what were you saying about response rate?
I'm sorry, the response rate being, those who filled out the survey. It was 34.6 percent this past year, 33.2 percent in 15, and 54 percent in.
Okay, okay, I, I, thank you.
Mind you, the overwhelming majority of those responses were, yeah, people who did vote yes for the budget. So there was only 10 this past year, just slightly larger the last year before that. That is it really for this.
And that's a very timely presentation as we get ready to talk about the budget. And we also, so everybody's aware, have a topic in April to discuss the actual exit poll survey itself to see if the board desires to continue it during this May's vote and the content of it and how that might look. So there'll be opportunities to discuss that, I believe, in the first or second meeting in April. That's all we have for the superintendent's report here.
Okay. Then on to new business. We'll need a motion to approve new business.
I'll make a motion to approve new business, items G1, A through M, 2, A through B, and 3, D.
Any discussion? Prior to voting, I just want to point out, we do, are appointing Haley Cole as a new ELA teacher at the middle school. And she is in the audience, so I'd like to welcome her to the team.
Welcome.
So welcome aboard. We will be appointing her tonight, so. All right, with that, I will make a motion to approve new business items G1, A through M, 2, A through B, and 3, D. All those in favor? Hi? Question 360. All right, any follow-up action items? We will need a motion to convene to executive session. We need to describe why we're going into executive session.
Like a move that we convene to executive session for matters regarding negotiations and employment of a particular person.
I have a second. All those in favor? Thank you everyone for coming, appreciate it.